By Executive Order N 2920 issued on March 18, 2020, NMUSD Board Meetings will be closed to the public. Spanish interpretation is available via the Zoom link. Good evening, good afternoon, everyone. For our closed session beginning at 3:00 P. M., roll call, please.
Trustee Yelsey?
Here.
Trustee Barto?
Here.
Trustee Metoyer?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Crane? Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Here.
Trustee Wagen?
Here.
And Mr. Lee Sung. I believe he was trying to log in. Technical difficulties.
Okay, thank you. Community input on closed session agenda items only. We do have one item, one comment for closed session. So, Trustee Metoyer.
Speakers wishing to address the board on closed session items have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by no later than 11:00 A. M. today, May 18, 2021. Comments on closed session items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
And we have one comment. It is from Linaya Smith. Mrs. Fish, can you let her in, please?
Thank you, President Yelsey. We will now hear from Linaya Smith. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourselves from the meeting record and begin speaking.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Linaya Smith, and I was wondering if you guys would consider removing the mandate for masks for outside spectators at outdoor sporting events on the school fields, in particular Little League. We're so thankful that you've allowed us to play sports on the fields, but with the new CDC regulations, as well as the amount of people that are vaccinated and the studies that have come out about the outdoor spread being less than 1%, I was wondering if you guys would make masks just optional for outside. I know for baseball, we all social distance. We sit, you know, like on lawn chairs, spread out in the fields. So I was just wondering if there was any consideration to make that optional instead of mandated. I know tons of people are starting to not wear masks if they've been vaccinated, and I don't want it to be, to get ruined for the kids, you know, for their season. So I was wondering if they would change the ruling.
Thank you. President Yelsey, there are speakers in the queue.
Thank you, and thank you, Linaya. And we continue to talk about masks and continue to get updated guidance. So we will let the public know whenever we receive any news on that front. That is the only comment. Before we move into closed session, I want to advise everyone that we will be online for the first portion of our closed session, and we will reconvene in closed session at 5:30 at the district office. And then open session will commence at 6:00 as scheduled. So, board members, please log off and log into closed session. Thank you. Can you hear? Can someone indicate whether you can hear now? Ah. Okay. We got it. Thank you. Thank you for our panelists letting us know that they can hear. Otherwise, we'd just be talking to ourselves all night.
And that's a different issue.
Okay. So we've just had an adoption of the agenda and adoption of the minutes, but we're moving on to something more, much more exciting. And I will turn it over to Superintendent Lee Sung. Item 10, recognition.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm very proud and honored to recognize seven amazing seniors from our district at our seven high schools. And since 2012, I believe 2012 was the first year that this district started this incredible tradition, which is to recognize students for their character traits. Now, we have amazing academic students, and we have amazing students that display incredible character. And the process here is that we request our principals to nominate a particular student from their school site with this character trait. And there are seven character traits that we're going to be honoring our students with. And the first one is caring. Another is citizenship, fairness, respect, responsibility, trustworthiness, and courage. Now, I would suspect all seven of these probably have all seven of these characters, but they're selected in one of these categories, and that they'll be honored tonight. I also have the privilege to visit them at their school site, a couple in their Zoom classrooms, but do a little surprise visit. And I will tell you, the short time I got to spend with each of these students is amazing. The principals did really well to select seven amazing students that will be honored here tonight. And so we have all of our high school principals, who will say a few words about each of our recipients. And let me just go ahead and read each of their names first for a moment, and then we will call up each of the principals and recipients to turn their picture on, say a few words, and then we'll go right to the next one. So meanwhile, I'm going to put my, share my screen here so you can see their pictures and their names. Okay, one moment. There we are. Okay. So, starting with Maddie McNamara from Back Bay Montevista High School. And Principal Wagner will introduce her, followed by Hannah Moffett in the area of citizenship from Cronodale Mar High School. Principal Hill in the area of courage. Chris Lopez from Costa Mesa High School. And Principal Haley will talk about him. Next is fairness. Valeria Zecua from Estancia High School. And Principal Hall will do that presentation. Then we have, in the area of respect, Ruby Hammond from Newport Harbor High School. Principal Bolton. Responsibility, Elizabeth Libby from Cloud Campus with Principal Shaka. And finally, trustworthiness, Bridget Pineda, Early College High School, and Principal Martinez. So let's go ahead and start with Principal Wagner. Would you please introduce and share about Maddie McNamara?
Hi. I was making sure I'm waiting the correct amount of time. Good evening, and thank you, President Yelsey, Vice President Barto, Superintendent Lee Sung, board members, executive cabinet, and distinguished guests. Tonight, I have the privilege and honor to recognize our outstanding and amazing student, Maddie McNamara, for the superintendent's character trait of caring. One thing about Maddie is that she cares, and it shows with how hard she works to foster a positive and inclusive culture on campus, where students are welcome and accepted. True story. Just a week and a half ago, at our senior breakfast celebration, where our seniors pick up their caps and gowns, take their senior portraits, and get to have a really nice breakfast, I noticed the student sitting all alone, and so did Maddie and her friends. The student was invited to their table, where they engaged in conversation, and even invited her to go with them to talk to some other students. I was very proud of Maddie and her friends for their maturity and willingness to put themselves out there by reaching out to another student and including her in their fun, even though they were strangers just a few minutes prior. Maddie has been a great student leader this year, and the staff and students appreciate her. Maddie has strong ethics, moral principles, and will go far in life. This year, Maddie has been an instrumental part of our campus community in Back Bay, where she has led the pledge of allegiance and morning announcements, taken on the responsibilities as the student's school board representative, ASB president, and is also our superintendent student advisory member. Currently, Maddie is enrolled in five classes at school, as well as two ROP courses, Crime Scene Investigation and Administration of Justice. Just recently, she was awarded an A scholarship from the Exchange Club, as well as a Patrick's Purpose Foundation grant. After graduation, Maddie plans to attend OCC before moving on to the University of San Diego or UCLA. It has been a pleasure to have Maddie as a student leader this year on our campus, and I can't thank you enough, Maddie. Congratulations.
Okay, we can move right to the next recipient. Okay, Principal Hill?
Good evening, President Yelsey, trustees, Superintendent Lee Sung. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Hannah Moffett to you. The selection of the student who would represent the trait of citizenship was difficult, especially at first. Discussing various students who've made contributions created a large list of outstanding students. As we began looking more in depth at the students, the decision became clearer. Hannah's distinctions caused her to rise above an already elevated crowd. As mentioned already in district communications, Hannah is a dynamic element on this campus and in our entire community, something we all hope to nurture in our future citizens. I guess they're current citizens as well. She started a club called Code Hers, which overflowed CDM boundaries and drew attention and engagement from Newport Mesa students and other high schools. The club's primary focus was closing the gender gap in STEM areas. Hannah saw success with her club as it grew and as more female students began to enroll in our computer science classes. College Board recognized Cronodale Mar High School with the Female Diversity Award in AP Computer Science this year, one of only 260 programs in the world to be recognized with this distinction. Their credit for this recognition rests entirely with Hannah. It's rare that a student drives an initiative that draws the attention of College Board, but that's the type of citizen Hannah is. We're very confident that when people visit the district offices on Bear Street, something we hope will happen in person next year, and they see the huge banner with Hannah's name and picture on it, that they will come face to face, literally, with someone who embodies citizenship. Hannah wanted me to take a moment to thank Superintendent Lee Sung and myself for the part we played in this process, which we both acknowledge is very minimal. She also wanted to thank her counselor, Mrs. Reed, her two computer science teachers, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Garrett, for their support, their encouragement, and their inspiration. Hannah will attend UC Irvine on a full scholarship next year, where she will study computer and electrical engineer. Hannah Moffett.
Okay, congratulations, Hannah. We can move on to Principal Haley. Courage, Chris Lopez.
Yes. Good evening, President Yelsey, members of the board, Superintendent Lee Sung, executive cabinet, distinguished guests. It is an honor to share the screen with somebody who demonstrates courage, like Christopher Lopez de Los Angeles, a fabulous senior here at Costa Mesa High School. Similar to the other award winners, especially during times of a pandemic, many names were thrust forward when we start talking about the pillar of courage. And when we discussed it as a faculty and a staff, one name emerged to the top several times, and that is Christopher Lopez de Los Angeles. During the pandemic, again, many students have demonstrated courage. All of us have, but Chris stands out. Courage and spirit are evident in whatever challenges are presented to him. This is evident when it comes to his education, playing soccer, and his relationship with friends and family. Looking at his smile, the boy is simply a contagious young man. Chris endured unimaginable hardships throughout the pandemic, including the loss of both of his parents. He's been courageous through these painful circumstances and has continued to show up every day where hard to succeed in all aspects of his life. Chris works full-time to support himself, has nearly perfect attendance, and plays on the varsity soccer team. Chris has a disposition that demonstrates the ability to express care for others' well-being by expressing gratitude for school staff and classmates for their efforts in making high school a supportive and positive experience. After graduation, Chris intends to continue his education at Orange Coast College in the fall, and we know he's bound for wonderful things. Christopher Lopez de Los Angeles.
All right. Thank you, Principal Haley, and congratulations, Chris. Moving on to Estancia High School, Principal Hall in the category of fairness for Valeria Zecua.
Good evening. Valeria Zecua has committed herself to ensure that Estancia is a fair and welcoming environment for everyone. As the co-president of the Acts of Random Kindness Club, she works tirelessly to make sure that all voices are heard and represented. Valeria invites students to participate and leads activities that promote kindness, fairness, and inclusion on our campus, such as Kindness Week, I Love Myself Challenge, Unity Day, Mental Health Awareness Month, and the Be Likeable on Social Media Day that was aimed at ensuring all of us is more positive and spreads positivity. As a link crew leader on our campus, she welcomes students by guiding their transition into high school. Valeria is open-minded and willing to listen to others' perspective and ideas and guarantee an equitable outcome for everyone. Valeria is known for benevolence, her kindness, and she prioritizes time to help peers who need extra support, as well as speak up and champion for the causes that she believes in. As Ms. Chamberlain noted, Valeria goes above and beyond to ensure everyone on campus is treated fairly and feels welcome. After graduation, Valeria plans on attending Cal State University Long Beach for a student studying linguistics, with hope of becoming a speech pathologist. And I hope that she one day returns to Newport Mesa and helps lead others the way that she has led her peers.
Congratulations, Valeria. Thank you, Principal Hall. Next, from Newport Harbor High School in the category of respect, Ruby Hammond and Principal Bolton.
President Yelsey, members of the board, Superintendent Lee Sung, executive cabinet, and distinguished guests, thank you for honoring Ruby Hammond and all the pillars of character award winners tonight. Ruby, like most students in the sister schools that we have in Newport Mesa, came through a rigorous process and identified as our pillar of character award winner for so many different reasons. Ruby has undergone a total transformation. She oversaw a total transformation at Newport Harbor High School within our leadership group to be servant leaders on campus and within ASB. She has exuded and exemplified all our most cherished values in so many different ways, but respect stands out because she respected the process. It wasn't an easy process. She was intentional. She was thoughtful. Her voice was calm, but it was heard. And every time inclusiveness was left out of the conversation, she would include those on campus who didn't have a voice, those students who needed a voice. And that's what we're so proud of her for. She has overcome personal turmoil at home in a lot of different ways, life-changing health issues with her family. She overcame that. She persevered. She made no excuses, and she carried on. We could not be more proud of her and where she's going off to college next year. She's going to University of Washington to study medicine. She's been a four-year member of our tennis team. And again, she's been our treasurer, member of the executive board, an outstanding student, and an outstanding sailor at Newport Harbor High School all four years. Ruby's going to be missed, but her legacy is going to be enduring, and she will not be forgotten. Ruby Hammond.
All right. Congratulations, Ruby. Thank you, Principal Bolton. Next is from our Cloud Campus. We have in the category of responsibility, Elizabeth Libby and Principal Shaka.
Members of the board, Mr. Lee Sung, executive cabinet, I have the distinct honor of recognizing Elizabeth Libby as the NMUSD Character Award recipient for the characteristic of responsibility. I can think of no student more deserving for this award. Elizabeth's resilience and positivity have been instrumental in building both school community and an inclusive environment at our newly formed Cloud Campus. Her work ethic and dependability are truly motivating to our students, staff, and community. Elizabeth has been a key leader in developing Cloud Campus's high school-associated student body. As ASB vice president, she is responsible for ensuring outgoing school communications, including school-age messages, video announcements, and live Zoom meetings, as well as managing community-building, school-wide events. One example of these activities that she spearheaded is a school-wide Mental Health Awareness Week, where she organized virtual yoga, cooking classes, mindfulness training, movie night, and painting for kindergarten through 12th grade students. Elizabeth is also an NMUSD Student Board Member Representative, responsible for examining district-wide issues from multiple perspectives and listening to all viewpoints before making important decisions. She prioritizes the needs of others and works hard to ensure others are taken care of. She is known for being attentive to the needs of her peers and offers encouragement and support for those who need it. Congratulations, Elizabeth.
Congratulations, Elizabeth. Thank you, Principal Shaka. And our seventh and final character trait award winner is Bridget Pineda from Early College High School in the category of trustworthiness. And we have Principal Martinez.
Good evening, President Yelsey, or trustees, Superintendent Lee Sung, cabinet members, and other distinguished guests. It is my privilege to elaborate on our outstanding champion of character, Bridget Pineda, for the pillar of trustworthiness. I will attempt to do her justice, just as the school district did so in her standout video done a little over a month ago, which very much captured her essence. As we've been navigating the pandemic and being remote for much of that time, we needed to trust on student leaders within our National Honor Society program to serve as reliable tutors for our student body. Bridget would not only set up regular remote tutoring sessions with our students, but also Zoom meetings with staff to discuss or to tease progress, struggles, and challenges while we've been in distance learning from April 2020 to March 2021. Bridget would share her insights based on empathy and honesty. In relation to our students, she exercises being social and easy to communicate, as she is a peer they can trust. She's thoughtful in her communication skills and a good listener, which has allowed her to be a positive mentor to our younger students. These skills will serve as the foundation for trustworthiness, will serve her well as she enters Chico State this fall with a desire to pursue a career in nursing. And I won't give too much away, because we have our awards night a couple nights, but she will be earning other awards based not only on her character, but just her achievement, which is a reflection of her persistence during this pandemic. And we're going to be proudly putting her banner up eventually, pretty soon, along with our past recipients and our wall of character that we have in our NPR. So thank you again for letting me speak to you about Bridget Pineda.
All right. Thank you, Principal Martinez. Congratulations, Bridget. And in closing, I just want to say that we have amazing students in our district, and these are some of the best. Our principals and sites did a great job to nominate them. I'm glad that I got to meet each of them. They're going to be incredible representatives of our district and do incredible things in our society. And one thing that we do with this recognition is we create these beautiful banners that will hang here at the district office in our lobby. Hopefully, next year, we'll have a whole bunch of people coming through, like normal times, but they will be there on display, recognizing these seven amazing students of ours. So, President Yelsey and trustees, those are our Character Trait Award winners for 2021.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Lee Sung. And it is so exciting to see these new students come along every year and then see their banners out in the hallway. And I hope they will also come back next year, after their first year in college, to really see them. I believe we give them their banners after a year. And we know you're getting many more recognitions throughout this graduation season. And we are very proud of our two student board members who were selected, both Maddie and Elizabeth. We have worked with you, and we know how special you are. And we appreciate all of you. So thank you so much. It's such a great recognition and fun to see everyone. I wish it had been in person. But anyway. Next, we'll move on to student board member reports. And today, their topic is graduation, which we are all looking forward to. In fact, we even have lots of good information on that. So we have three student board members reporting. The first one is doing the voting tonight. Luca Gorgorishvile. Luca?
Good evening, President Yelsey, Superintendent Lee Sung, and guests. Regarding graduation, I personally think, I am personally honored to have the opportunity to be able to have an in-person graduation. I asked a few people at school as well. And many people are happy to hear that we're actually going to graduating in person. And they think the fact that we're able to invite four people, up to four people, as guests for graduation is also great. And I think overall, all the students at school that are graduating this year are happy to have it in person, and it's going to serve as a great memory for high schoolers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Elizabeth? Libby?
Hello, student board. Today, I will be presenting about the graduation ceremonies, not only for the 12th graders, but also promotion for the ninth graders. Our graduation virtual ceremony production will be airing on June 9th with a drive-through ceremony, and also that will be on June 9th as well. Students will be wearing their cap and gown to the drive slash walk-through, depending on the family's comfort level. And then they will also receive their diploma, and they will get to shake Dr. Shaka's hand. This will also allow for seniors to get some of a more traditional graduation photo opportunities. And then the promotion will be a virtual ceremony that will also be airing on June 9th. And then also, we are going to be having a virtual award ceremony production for middle and high school students, which will air on June 2nd. And personally, as a student, they've done multiple things to make it extra special this year. They even dropped off a sign at my house that says, "Congratulations, Cloud Campus graduate", and gave me a bag full of goodies. And also, there's an opportunity for seniors to be sponsored by a teacher, where they ask, "What's your favorite snacks? What's their favorite place to go to?" And they're getting us a gift basket for each senior that participates, and that will be given to us during our graduation. So, thank you to everyone and the Cloud Campus staff for doing this. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And before I call on Bailey, that just as a reminder, could we get a list of all the award ceremonies so that we can join in? I know historically, we can attend some of them in person, but on Zoom, we may be...
Absolutely. We almost have that finalized, so all of the trustees will get that list, and you're all welcome to attend.
Okay, great. And finally, we have Bailey Bogart from Newport Harbor High School.
Hello, everyone. I am Bailey Bogart, representing Newport Harbor High School. I just first wanted to say that after spending these last few weeks in person for classes four days a week, it has been extremely rewarding as a student. It's been a lot more motivating, and the days feel a lot more productive. And I feel like that is what makes our graduation even more rewarding, the in-person graduation. It makes that an amazing thing to look forward to. And I am extremely grateful to stand alongside my peers to graduate this year. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Bailey. Next, we'll move on to the Harbor Council PTA report. Lisa Bowler.
Good evening, Superintendent Lee Sung, President Yelsey.
Good evening, Superintendent Lee Sung, President Yelsey, Trustees, Cabinet, and guests. Our PTAs are working away at getting our elections held, our new officers for next year in place, so that we can start planning on all the good work the PTAs will be putting forward next year. And also, I wanted to let you guys know that we just wrapped up, not we, but state PTA just wrapped up the 122nd Annual PTA Convention. And it ran this year, convention itself ran from the 13th to the 16th. And they had, because it was all virtual, they had a pre-convention that ran starting on May 3rd and went through Sunday. There were workshops and different live get-togethers where you could talk, have roundtable discussions. There were over 50 different workshop trainings that you could attend. There were over almost 2,000 attendees with 995 individual members from our 620 schools throughout the state. And we had 88 council representatives that came from 60 councils throughout the state. So we had voting members of almost 1,200. We had three general sessions where the business of the PTA took place. In the first session, we heard from Leslie Boggs, the National PTA President. And we also heard from the Governor of California, who said that he was very proud of the teachers and also of the PTA. We voted for our upcoming two-year officers at state level, and two of the positions were actually contested. So we had to have a vote on the non-contested. And then we voted the next day on the contested in an actual ballot, which had to be done, obviously, virtually. That was very interesting. But the president-elect being one of those positions, and she happens to be right here from our neighbor Huck Huntington Union Council, and she will be president of state PTA for the 2020, let's see, this is 2123. She'll be the 2325 PTA president. So our second president in recent times from 4th District PTA, which is really impressive for our Southern California PTA members. Our speaker for that day was Julie Haynes, who wrote a book on how to raise an adult. And her second book is Your Turn: How to Be an Adult. And she spoke to us on the importance of making the personal connections during these hard times and how important it is for all of us, whether we're in the workplace or we're away, or we're, you know, just doing whatever. We need to make those little connections that we do so, you know, at the grocery store, you say hi to the person in line behind you. We just need to make sure that even though we're on Zooms or whatever, we still make those connections because it's just so important. And then on our last day, the California State PTA Resolution on Teaching Hard History: American Slavery. That was, we had spoke speakers on both sides for and against the resolution. And after hearing the discussion, there were two hearings also held previous to the the voting day. The resolution was adopted by the group, and it will move forward to National PTA to be looked at by their committee. And if it passes at that level, it will go on to the legislature. And that third-day speaker was the Teacher of the Year for California, and her name was Keisha Brown. And I think, I've apologized, and I don't remember exactly, but I think they said she was from Marietta School District. And that is my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
President Yelsey, over here. Can I say something real quick? Ms. Bowler, I wanted to thank the Harbor Council PTA for co-sponsoring the Parent Education Series this year. We really appreciate it.
Yes, that was our pleasure. Our pleasure. We look forward to doing that again next year. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you. Next, we will have a D-LAC report from President Carla Hernandez and our school facility, our school community facilitator, Jaclyn Alarcon. And Ms. Hernandez will present her report, and then Ms. Alarcon will provide English interpretation.
Buenas noches, President Yelsey and miembros de... Buenas noches, President Yelsey and miembros de la junta directiva y superintendente. Soy Carla Hernandez, presidenta de DILAC y madre de un estudiante en la escuela Victoria. Durante la última reunión de DILAC, tuvimos la oportunidad de participar en la Feria Virtual de Recursos Familiales. Por lo general, tenemos la feria de recursos familiares en persona. Sin embargo, este año fue diferente. Varias agencias de la comunidad compartieron información importante con los padres. La presentación de la Liga de Asistencia me pareció interesante. La Liga de Asistencia brinda ayudas a cientos de familias necesitadas durante la pandemia y continúan trabajando todos los días con todas las escuelas del distrito. Además, encontré muy beneficiosa la presentación de SOI, Save Our Joy, sobre los programas después de escuela y los programas académicos que ofrecen en persona. Gracias por la oportunidad de compartir con ustedes esta noche. Muchas gracias por su tiempo y su atención.
Good evening, President Yelsey, Trustees, and Superintendent. I am Jacqueline Gaetan, a community facilitator. I have the pleasure of working with our DILAC parents. I will be reading the report in English for Mrs. Hernandez. Good evening, President Yelsey, Trustees, and Superintendent. I am Carla Hernandez, DILAC president and parent of a student at Victoria. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight. During the last DILAC meeting, we had the opportunity to participate in the Virtual Family Resource Fair. We usually have the Family Resource Fair in person. However, this year was different. Nevertheless, several agencies from the community share important information with parents. I found the presentation of the Assistant League interesting. The Assistant League provides help to hundreds of families in need during the pandemic, and they continue working every day with all the schools around the district. Additionally, I found the presentation from SOI, Safe Our Youth, regarding the after-school programs and the academic programs they offer in person very beneficial. Thank you very much for your attention, Carla Hernandez, DILAC president.
Thank you both for that very detailed report, and we appreciate you participating again. Next up, we have President Tamara Fairbanks with NMFT.
Good evening, Board and honored guests. I would like to show appreciation to all certificated staff. They have worked tirelessly all year long through every transition from distance learning to hybrid to what we're doing now. They worked outside of their duties to place markers on playgrounds, created ways to keep kids safe and distance, and made sure that there are very few outbreaks in their classrooms. Our SDC classes at both the secondary and elementary level have had the most exposure, with some classes shutting down this year. Their dedication to students' learning, i.e. PICOS, have been nothing less than exceptional. We thank all of those workers for being full-time all year long, sacrificing everything on behalf of your students. I would also like to thank all of my school nurses, who have been diligent in preserving the health of our students, contact tracing to the wee hours, as well as doing their normal daily duties. We thank you, nurses, for all of your hard work. SDC has been in person all year. Elementary has been in person since September. Secondary has been in person since November. Even prior to that, these professionals have made contact with parents, have created new uses and ways to deliver curriculum, have spent their summers in free time trying to better their craft and reach out to students. These employees are my heroes. They have done all of this with very little communication. They have made every transition happen, even though the materials they needed may not have showed up on time. They did this in spite of the media and some groups degrading their work and misrepresenting what they do, all of this because they love their students and they love their jobs. Thank you, certificated staff. NMFT honors you, your work, your health, and your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Fairbanks. And I just wanted to say, I believe that all of the board echoes your comments you made tonight. We are so appreciative and proud of our district, but our district is composed of our teachers and our classified employees, who have all been back at school working. And I've tried to get around to a lot of the school campuses. I haven't finished it, but with some of the other board members. And I really want to get that message across that while some people, some districts have not had students back in school at all, and some just part-time, our teachers have come back, our classified has come back every time we have asked them to make a switch. And I think we all should be really proud of that and really appreciative of what they've done. So thank you for those comments. Next, President Saunders from CSEA.
Good evening, President Yelsey, Board, Superintendent Lee Sung, Cabinet, and guests. Thank you for this opportunity from CSEA. First and foremost, we'd like to thank all of our classified employees throughout the district for all their hard work and dedication during the pandemic. Our positive impact is not done yet. We are very grateful to every classified employee for their hard work. CSEA has been an integral part in getting us where we are today and will continue to help to lead the way to educational normalcy. CSEA is celebrating Classified School Employees Week, May 15th through the 22nd. We would like to thank the board for recognizing us on the board agenda tonight on 19B. Also, we would like to thank Superintendent Russell Lee Sung for the much appreciated thank you letter to our classified staff. We really missed our Appreciating Classified Employees A Day celebration this year and the connection it provides with administration and classified. We look forward to continuing this annual tradition. We would still like to continue the safety measures of all students and staff at schools and work sites now that all schools are back full day in-person instruction. CSEA wants to ensure that classified members' needs and concerns are still addressed. We'd like to remind everyone to continue to wear a mask and social distance. Please stay safe during the upcoming Memorial Day holiday weekend. Again, thank you for the opportunity. CSEA Chapter 18.
Thank you very much for that report. And next, we'll move on to 14A, Financial Report from the Citizens Oversight Committee Regarding Measure F Expenditures. Mr. Holcomb, would you like to present that?
Thank you. Actually, we need to have, there he is. Mr. Julio Zunzunegi is the chairperson of the Citizens Oversight Committee. He will present the report this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, district leadership and community members. On behalf of the seven members of the Measure F Citizens Oversight Committee for the district, it's a privilege to serve the members of the school board and certainly the taxpayers of our school district. Wanted to make sure everyone understands the scope of our committee. The Citizens Oversight Committee, known as the COC, was established by the school board in 2005 for the primary purpose of ensuring that our taxpayers, ensuring our taxpayers, the expenditures of the bonds are consistent with the stated purposes of measure F. In other words, to confirm that our district is using the bond funds in the way we promised our taxpayers. Our members are appointed by the board and by a broad range of constituency groups in the community. And our committee will serve until the last dollar measure F funds are spent. A little bit of our process, how we perform our charter duty by meeting four times a year with the senior management of the district is necessary. But also, we meet with the architects, builders, and independent auditors. During the meetings, they present a detailed update of the planning, scheduling, budgeting, and expenditures on all current measure F funds and projects to us. And at that time, our committee probes the members of the board of the district and corresponding service providers with questions and thoughts. Sometimes for hours, they certainly graciously patiently answer all of our questions. They provide data, provide charts, they dig deep to be able to satisfy our queries. All of that, of course, is with the taxpayer in mind. Annually, during the fall meeting, and I've been a part of two of those now, we also interview an independent audit firm who audits our financials of the Measure F Building Fund, which contains the bond proceeds and then completes a performance audit that ensures expenditures are compliant with the relevant sections of the California Constitution, as well as the provisions for measure F. Our findings at the moment. On behalf of our committee, I'm pleased to report that for the most recent two fiscal years, ending in June 30th, 20 and of 19, our independent auditor has given the district's Measure F Building Fund financial statements and unqualified opinion, translated as a clean bill of health for both financial and the performance audits. Our committee has also reviewed the expenditures related to the Estancia High School Theater Project thus far, which will comprise most of the funding from Measure F over the next couple of years. Given the recent NMUSD board approval of the project budget, with placed at $32 million, of which 26 are monies from Measure F and additional money is allocated from the NMUSD budget. Our committee understands that NMUSD will fund district-wide ongoing major maintenance at 4% of the district's general fund, according with the Board Resolution 340300. And this funding is to be used for maintenance and maintenance in order to ensure that facilities, including the theater project, are maintained at a high standard of condition over time. The expenditures thus far towards the theater project are $1,517,645.63 thus far, as per Report SAB 184A, which we review. And these expenses are all within scope and primarily for the site, planning, and construction categories thus far. The theater project has been delayed, of course, due to COVID as common knowledge. And we also anticipate DSA review, as well as approval, will be complete by end of month, June of this year. Bidding finished for the project by end of this summer and construction commencement taking place in early quarter four of this year. We feel that the project will be outstanding example of design and construction for the school site, certainly for the students and the community. And our committee will continue to monitor the budget and expenses of the project until its completion. After considerable review of the documents and Q&amp;A with the district executives and managers, our committee members are satisfied with the expenditure aspect of the project and believe they are in keeping with the requirements of Measure F. It's a very defined process that we are here to have oversight of. And certainly, with respect to supporting the taxpayer interest. With Mr. Holcomb, Mr. Trader, and other NMUSD leadership to be approachable in this process, we're certainly responsive and notwithstanding our probing efforts, always patient during our review process. Our committee commends them for the job they're doing in managing these measure F projects. The agenda of our, and minutes of our meetings are always available to the public on the district website. Thank you very much for allowing me to represent our committee. And we appreciate the district very much for the professional leadership they apply to all of the projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Julio.
President Yelsey, if I could also just thank Mr. Zunzunegi and all of the members of the Citizens Oversight Committee for their service. As you know, as we're at the end of the bond campaign, it's not as exciting as it was once upon a time. And yet, this group regularly meets as appointed in its quarterly... And yet this group regularly meets as appointed in its quarterly meetings. We have very good turnout, uh, lots of great questions. It's just really a testament to this community and to the individuals that you appointed, that they have had the level of interest and involvement in the oversight of the Measure F funding to date. So we thank you and thank them for their service.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Holcomb, for saying that. I was, I was going to say something about how, no, no, but I appreciate it because you work with them. But I know some of them have contacted me, um, over, over the years about issues, just to get clarification on things. And they take the responsibility of being the oversight of our taxpayer dollars very seriously. And they've been a committed group of people. I think we're extremely fortunate to have every member on that committee. And, uh, we thank them for, as you, as you say, they, they kind of are behind the scenes and people don't see a lot of the work and oversight they do, but we appreciate them being there.
Very much.
And it's hard to believe that Measure F was two thousand and five, which I remember making phone calls for it. And thank you so much and thank you very much for the report.
If I can ask a question too. I was just wondering if we could please get, I know, um, I think I asked in February, if the board could just get the adopted minutes when they're completed, that would be wonderful. Cause I'm, 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 I see that the February ones are on there, but whenever the May agenda comes out as the adopted minutes, I would love to have them email to the board. And then I, I just too, um, had one more question. I feel like sometimes, um, the COC members seem to have more information than some of the board members have. So I, I loved hearing from Julio that in quarter four, we're starting construction. I would love to know some more of those facts. I know that when they meet, they get really comprehensive information. So if there could be maybe like a shared document, so whatever shared at the COC, if the board could see that now the next week, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item fifteen, community input on agendized items. Trustee Matoye.
Speakers wishing to address the board on agendized items have submitted the appropriate comment card on district, on the district website by no later than eleven AM today, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Comments on agendized items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to twenty minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. We will take public comments as we approach the items on the agenda.
And we have one comment on the consent calendar. Mrs. Fish, would you, um, call up Wendy Leece?
Thank you, President Yelsey. Yes, we have one speaker, um, consent, Wendy Leece. You now, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record and begin speaking.
Yes, good evening, um, Madam President and members of the Newport Mesa Unified School Board. My name is Wendy Leece. I'm calling about item seventeen B eight, which is the approval of gate two-year in-service training for gate teachers. And interesting, I was wondering what happened to the gate program during COVID. But, um, as this is an agenda item or you'll be approving, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars per hour for the consultants to do the training. I would like you also to keep in mind that, um, we need to look at all students who are eligible for the gifted program. Um, I'm not sure how that worked and maybe it would be wise to put it on the agenda so that the whole community knows what is the criteria for all students. To that point, I would also like you to consider, um, art and music as programs that need to be in the core curriculum for all students, especially after COVID. Another program that I would like you to see to enrich all students is junior achievement. Did you know that the Junior Achievement Office is at three oh one E Seventeenth Street in Costa Mesa? And yet we have never had, in my recent memory, junior achievement as part of an enrichment program. When I talk about enrichment, because I think this board needs to go the extra mile as much as you can to restore the learning loss with enrichment programs, particularly in art and in music. I know you have a fund, uh, that's set aside for enrichment and this is the time to use it and not continue to save it for a rainy day. The rainy day has happened. It was COVID and thank you very much for your time.
Thank, thank you. President Yelsey, that's all the speakers we have on the queue for right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Leece. Um, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Before we get there, superintendent's report, Superintendent Lee Sung.
Okay, thank you, President Yelsey. Uh, I have three topics I want to, uh, share with you tonight. First of all, I do want to start with a couple of the resolutions that we have on the agenda today, recognizing our employees, first of all, our teachers and certificated staff and then our classified. And so, uh, President Yelsey, you, you mentioned this a little while ago about our district is the people. It, it is the people. We have wonderful programs. We have wonderful facilities. We have a lot of wonderful things, but it's all because of the people that makes this real and happen for our kids. And so I'm very proud of our employees, uh, not just this year because of COVID, but every year, every year, and I think we all, uh, share in that. Uh, they have been doing amazing work for years. But I think we do focus on this year in particular because it has been quite a challenge and unusual like none other. And I did write, um, a message to our certificated staff a couple of weeks ago. Uh, it was very heartfelt and sincere about, uh, the fact that they have stepped up. They did step up several times this year throughout the year to welcome our students and to adjust their instructional model, uh, to provide the highest quality instruction for them. Uh, and then this week with our classified. From the very first day that we shut down, when we shut down, there were still employees who were working in person. And, and everybody has contributed and everybody has stepped up. And I know myself and our, uh, board really appreciates the positive approach that our employees have taken, uh, at each one of these challenges and steps. And it certainly has been an incredible collective effort of our employees, certificated, classified, and of course, our management as well. So very, very proud of them. I think we should all be very proud of the work that they've done, not only this year, but, but, uh, you know, in the past and I know in the future. Uh, I get a chance to meet with advisory committees and there is a specific advisory committee for classified employees. I have forty-six amazing employees who have stepped up to serve on this advisory committee. And I also have a certificated advisory committee with about forty members as well. And they have been participating and giving me feedback, sharing their ideas. And it has been a wonderful group. We meet monthly. We're going to meet again next week and giving some really incredible feedback. And I will tell you, the comments that they shared, uh, as we opened up were just amazing of how proud they are, uh, sharing stories of their interactions with kids, with their colleagues and with the parents that, that were coming. So truly, uh, has been a highlight, um, hearing from, from all of them. Moving to another topic, uh, today, our county, uh, released the latest COVID numbers. So I want to share with you that the case rate and positivity rate continue to decline, which is great news for all of us here in Orange County. And as of today, the county is at one point five in, in, uh, case rate and zero point nine in positivity. Now, what does that mean? Now, both of those criteria are now well into the yellow category, uh, yellow tier, which is the lowest tier in the system. And, uh, since we've had two weeks in a row with, uh, data in the yellow tier, that means our county will be going officially to the yellow tier. So that is great news for all of us, for our economy, for our kids, for our parents. Now, the significant thing that that changes for us here in schools is many of these events like graduation and promotion and some senior activities and a lot of events that are being, uh, planned right now. The capacity increases. And so that is wonderful news. And we announced, uh, several weeks ago that we were hoping to be in yellow. Now, I had full confidence we'd be in yellow and, but we had a contingency plan if we were in orange, but we are here in yellow, which means that we can increase our capacity. So we announced previously that we would only have two tickets per graduate, uh, if we were in orange. But now that we're in yellow, uh, we can double that capacity and go to four tickets. So we certainly are very, very pleased to get in yellow and be able to do that. I also want to comment that, uh, there's been a lot of questions about, uh, our requirements and guidance for masks. And I know this is a, a very important issue for, for, uh, many folks for a lot of great reasons. And, uh, the CDC, as we all know, put out, uh, some announcements, which created a lot of questions and a lot of confusion. And so I just want to clarify that, uh, the CDC certainly, they, when they put out recommendations, that causes all of the states, including here in California, to look very closely at those recommendations. But we have to wait for the state, uh, and the county to make the adjustments in order for us to make modifications to our current, um, requirements and, and practices. So, uh, we need to hold on, uh, some of this guidance that the CDC talks about is for the general public, but it doesn't necessarily apply to the workplace or for a school setting. And I just want to assure our, our board, I want to assure our public that we do look at this guidance very closely. And when that guidance gets adjusted or updated, we look to see what we can do here in the schools. But for right now, uh, the changes that the CDC has announced, uh, does not affect schools. Okay, we're hoping that there will be a major update. We hear that there will be one forthcoming. Uh, June fifteenth is a day we should all watch very closely because that's when our state plans to really modify and create a new system, uh, for all of us, not just in schools, but, uh, but in every sector. So we look forward to that. And we also will be making some decisions in terms of the fall based on the updated guidance. Still too early to make those decisions, but something that we're looking at very closely. And now speaking of the end of the year, now I heard from a colleague today, cause I don't count, but we are sixteen or seventeen school days away from the end of the school year. Okay, um, it, it's pretty amazing that we are almost there. We are almost there. And what that means for many of us is, is an exciting time with recognitions and events and activities. But it also means that many departments are kicking into their busiest time of the year. This is an exciting time. There's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, getting ready for our very large summer program as well as the fall. So I just want you to let you know that staff is working very hard. This is an exciting time. This is a fun time of the year, but also a very, very busy time. Thank you, President Yelsey.
Thank you very much for those words. And I know we, we all get questions about several of those issues. So it's nice to have some clarification. And yes, seventeen days left, it seems remarkable. There's a lot happening in the next seventeen school days. So exciting stuff going on. Uh, we'll move on to consent calendar.
I moved to accept this consent calendar.
A second. Moved by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Barto. Do I have any questions on the consent calendar?
I just had a few and they all got answered so quickly. It was great. Thank you.
Yay. Okay, move by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Barto, roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Moving right along to discussion action calendar. Item eighteen A, adoption of the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant. And I just, I, I know, uh, I know, um, Mr. Drake is going to present this along with Dr. Jocum and Mrs. Galey, but we want to thank you in advance for talking us through these programs, uh, in small groups. It's remarkable, the work you've done on this. And we're excited for you to share the, share it with the public. So, uh, take it away, team.
All right. Okay, um, well, uh, President Yelsey, trustees, uh, it really has been, uh, I mean, uh, heavy, a heavy lift, but a good one in that, um, putting a plan together to expand these expended, uh, expanded learning opportunities grant monies, which are extensive. They are one-time monies, which we have to consider as we build this plan of, of support for, for our students. It has been, uh, an extremely collaborative effort. Um, and as I've said over and over, we are grateful to have Vanessa Galey, uh, in our district to help. You know, weave all of these different plans that come our way together, um, you know, to, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of, of all of our students. Um, and so, so this evening, uh, we will share with you, uh, the Expanded Learning Opportunity Plan before you, uh, for approval. And I'm going to start out by asking Vanessa Galey to kind of give some background and then also help us jump into some of the specifics of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Drake, Superintendent Lee Sung, President Yelsey, members of the board and community. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak about this first plan, um, of the plan cycle. Um, we're very pleased to present the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan. Um, it is, uh, very exciting to be able to bring it before you today. Um, it's just south of thirteen million dollars, um, to support our students and, and help, um, bring some extra instructional opportunities to them. What you'll notice in this is it shows how this is just one part of a, a full host of plans. And so, um, this, this plan is in the context of another plan that you will see in June, our annual local control and accountability plan. So, um, the plan that we're bringing before you tonight is targeted and specific, and it does not encompass the full range of supports that we'll be providing over the course of next year. But it does give some great insight into some things we're doing for kids. You'll also notice that we'll be bringing the local control and accountability plan forward in, uh, June, on June fifteenth for public hearing. And you see that that also encompasses a range of, uh, general funds and, uh, local control funding formula, as well as, uh, some federal funds that will be in complement in the, um, federal addendum. Uh, in addition to that, there are additional streams of federal funding that will complement and support some of the things that we've started here in this year and that may continue, uh, in the ensuing years, of course, depending on their efficacy. Next slide, please. So one of the things that's important to remember is that, um, we have to prioritize certain students in this plan. And, um, that would be who you would typically expect. And you'll see a number of, of targeted students that we include in our local control and accountability plan. Now, of course, we want to focus on all of our students. All of our students, um, have, um, had different experiences, uh, during school closure. And we want to make sure that we're bringing them up to, um, to where they, they could have been, had we not been closed. And we're doing everything that we can. Some students have been disproportionately impacted. And so these impacted, these funds recognize that. And so you can see from that list of students, um, who is included in, um, these targeted funds and who we would prioritize as we're thinking about the content of the plan. Next slide, please. So, uh, what we want you to see here is that, um, there are a number of goals that we're going to focus on. There were seven possible areas that we could expend funds. And, um, our district took a look at it and we elected to focus on five of them. We felt like they would make the biggest impact in this short amount of time. As you saw on the first slide, these funds have, uh, an expiration date of August, two thousand and twenty-two. So it's important that we, um, do many things at once in this first year. And, um, then we keep on looking at what is successful and might continue in the future. And so the first thing that we'll focus on is expanding instructional time and instructional exposure. And we have invested heavily in, um, some summer programs. And we are so proud of the breadth and depth of things that we are able to offer to our elementary and secondary students. And, um, we are looking at many phases of the summer program. And in addition to that, instructional assistance support and behavior. And in addition to that, instructional assistance support and behavioral interventionist support, we're very pleased that we have some special ed students joining our general education program. And we're able to provide them their full one-on-one range of supports that they would see during the school year. Additionally, we have a robust secondary programs that are offered in the summer at each of our sites, so that students can have instruction on their own campuses with with some of their own teachers. And we're just very pleased that we'll be able to offer those summer opportunities in addition to what they'll be able to see in the scope of the following year. For number two, we're also looking at accelerating progress to close the learning gaps. And we have three priority areas that we're focusing on. One is tutoring for our secondary students. And it can be either one-on-one or small group learning. But typically, the the paper company is providing one-on-one support. And we're pleased with that because it's 24/7 at the student's need. And so we're pleased that we can offer that robust service over the course of next year. We're also going to be taking a great look at our wonderful instructional assistance support on our campuses, preserving those services and even expanding them. The the requirements of the plan say that we have to focus first on English learners and special education students. And next, we're going to prioritize students achieving below grade level. So we have a wide range of students who can be served. And we're very pleased that our classified staff will be able to be alongside us in that journey in the classrooms. Lastly, we're able to allocate funds for learning recovery programs and materials to design just to accelerate that student academic proficiency. We have Read 180 classes in place. And there was some funding that was going to expire in June of this year. And so because of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, we're able to preserve those courses and continue to offer those at a number of schools. So we're pleased to be able to offer that as well. Next slide, please. And I'll hand it off to Dr. Sarah Jocum to explain about this robust offering in goal three.
And really talk about the investment that we're looking at in the area of student support services, not only for next year, but also for the future. So we know that this money is is time certain, which means it's one-time money, and it's going to go away. And we have included Mr. Trader in all of our conversations to ensure that the services that need to continue and are part of the kind of base program are going to continue after this money goes away. So I won't read all of them to you, but I am most excited about the addition of elementary counselors to provide support at every one of our elementary schools with a halftime counselor to support basically what we look at as our tier one of multi-tiered systems of support, providing support for all students. And then a little bit of tier two, which is, you know, some individual small group counseling, that kind of thing. And we think that will make a big difference, and it really complements the services that we already have. And then we're going to also continue to expand and finish out some of the other services that we have, which is with our general education, adding behavior specialists, adding social worker. So we'll have one per zone. And with the addition of the elementary counselors, we're hoping that we can shift some of the support from social workers more to the secondary level. So they'll be able to do that. And then we're also looking at some additions in health services. And we are increasing the time of our health assistance. We did that this year, and we would like that to continue on, having them all be six-hour-a-day employees. And then looking at adding some support for special education psychologists, adding a teacher on special assignment to provide greater support for our students with mild to moderate disabilities. We have one TOE S A that's currently doing that. So this will allow one to focus on secondary. And we were talking today really of having that focus be more of our co-teaching and looking at our inclusive practices at secondary. So we're excited about that. We're looking at increasing some counselor time at Back Bay to have them have a full-time one. Project Hope Alliance is the next agenda item. So I will share with you that when we get there, but it's it's additional support for students experiencing homelessness. And then with our behavior specialist, this is you often hear them referred to as the sale team, right? And so we're adding some gen ed behavior specialists, but we're also adding some specialist support for students who are in foster, who are foster youth and living in group homes. Costa Mesa has a significant number of students in group homes, and it impacts some of our elementary school sites more than others. And so it takes a little bit of expertise to sometimes work within that system. And so we're we're thankful that we're going to have some more expertise to do that. Okay, Vanessa, you're, oh, John's up.
So for our secondary sites, another one of the areas that we wanted to focus on of the seven is support for credit deficient students as well as to complete, support them to complete graduation. And so in collaboration with our secondary principals, Vanessa ran two to three different meetings with them to really kind of hash away at what was really needed in order to support the credit deficient students, many of which were caused by the pandemic and and so forth. So we landed in a place of additional staffing, FTE. Now, that's not 15 new bodies, but it's 15 bodies worth of sections for our sites throughout our secondary schools to do two things. One is to definitely address the the credit deficiency that many of our students acquired, but while at the same time providing them supports during their next year's instruction. So there's there's varying ways that our our sites will go about providing that support through intervention and skill support throughout next year so that they're not continuing to be deficient in credits, but making up credits while they're continuing to accrue credits. And so that'll amount to at least 15 FTE of sections going out to our various secondary sites. And now I think I'm coming back to you, Sarah.
We could have just rearranged it, but you know, it's kind of nice getting some steps in, I guess. That's right. And so one of the pieces, when we when we hire staff and we have staff that come in, we don't want to just add bodies to add bodies. We really want to make sure that the work they're doing is focused and integrated with the work that's already going on at the school site. So what you see here is really the training that needs to go along with that. And it's one of the the aspects of the grant. And it talks about training for school staff on trauma-informed practices, how to engage students and families to address social emotional needs. So this is just some ideas that we have. We may end up going in one direction or another, but it really allows us to be able to to not only put the people in place, but to have the training to back it up. So that's what we're looking at there. Oh, I guess that's it. Vanessa, do you have anything you want to say at the end here?
No, just that we're so excited to watch this work. And with your approval, we we already have been planning underway for this robust summer program and all of the work that's going into that. And we're so proud of our our teacher teams who've been helping to design it. Our classified staff are helping us to execute it. And of course, our administrators who have been putting in many hours to try and make really meaningful program offerings for the summer. So we're thankful for all of that support, as well as the partnership that we've had between student services and ed services. We can't wait for you to see the Local Control and Accountability Plan. Oh, boy. And and we'll look forward to bringing that to you in June.
And I think it's pretty amazing. And one person that didn't come to play in all this is our illustrious Leona Olson, who is responsible for hiring all the people who are going to be doing this. So our HR department is extremely busy, which I'm sure she will speak to at some point tonight. But but this is an amazing program, an amazing opportunity that our students have right now. And every single item that they touched on is really well-needed. And the fact that a lot of these intervention things are reaching our tier one, all our tier one students and our gen ed students is is really great. We're just not reaching, we're reaching the most vulnerable, but we're reaching everybody. And this year, everybody was quite vulnerable. So thank you all. Do I have any questions? Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to let everyone know that when we get a chunk of money and someone says, okay, you have to spend it by a certain amount of time, we all could say, oh, let's go shopping and we'll buy and think of four people here, this piece of equipment there. And the thought and and care that went into how can we use this money the best way that won't bankrupt the district five years down the road, but also provide the most bang for the buck for our students? And when we constantly talk about tier one, if you watch all of our board meetings, shocking, you would know. But in general, tier one means every kid that comes to school. Every kid that comes to school can benefit from this. Typically, when we have a child that's that needs extra help and extra need, it seems like we spend our money more on that. And we're turning the pyramid upside down so that we feel that if we really help everybody, there will be less in that little tiny top to have to spend the extra money that we do and willingly do to help them succeed. It's it's from somebody that's been a teacher here and a principal here and see what we're doing now. It's amazing. And this is done on top of all the COVID garbage that we've had to go through for the past 15 months. So I just want to thank everybody so much for the hard work and well-placed dollars that you've done.
Anybody?
I just love the whole thing, and I would love to make a motion to adopt it.
Hey, all right. Move by trustee Anderson.
I'll second her. I'll second her motion. And I will third.
Move by trustee Anderson, seconded by trustee Metoye. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, vocal.
Student Board Member Luca Gukorishvili.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Woo-hoo. And thank you all again. I know you still have a lot of work to do. So hopefully, we won't keep you too long. 18B, approve MOU with Project Hope Alliance to provide services for students experiencing homelessness for the 2021-22 school year. We do have one speaker, but would would do the speaker first. Okay, Mrs. Fish, would you call in Tracy Carmichael?
Thank you, President Yelsey. Tracy, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Lee Sung, President Yelsey, and esteemed board trustees. I'm Dr. Tracy Carmichael. I have the distinct honor of serving as president and chief strategy officer for Project Hope Alliance. Virtual is different. You can't see me, but I want you guys to trust that I have a huge smile as I sit here from the comfort of my home office. I'm here tonight to express our profound gratitude for the partnership we have built in recent years to serve students experiencing homelessness throughout the district. This is a huge moment for us and arguably the biggest in our organization's history. And with any big moment, sometimes a quick look back means we're able to move forward. So I'm going to revel in my three-minute opportunity to walk you through what brought us here today. Newport Mesa is our home base, and it holds a very special place in our heart. Six years ago, Dr. Sean Bolton and his leadership team at Newport Harbor High made what I believe to be one of his wisest decisions of his career. He chose to openly and warmly welcome us onto his campus, providing us physical space, along with all the professional grace and trust that comes with any meaningful and authentic partnership. We placed a full-time case manager on campus to begin building relationships with youth experiencing homelessness. And we've witnessed alongside him the undeniable impact of our collective work. The one stat that we work backwards from at Project Hope is a student who graduates high school is 400% less likely to be homeless as an adult. I mean, just let that sink in, 400% less likely if you graduate high school to be homeless as an adult. We have worked together to change the trajectory of youth experiencing homelessness with a graduation rate that is 15% higher than the state average, not to mention marked improvements in attendance and discipline. And while that data are impressive, our pride really comes in knowing that we're breaking the cycle of generational homelessness. So that homeless youth today do not become homeless adults tomorrow. Since Dr. Bolton took that first chance on us, we've enjoyed an ever-growing partnership alongside Dr. Augustino and Angela Allen Hess at the district office. As you may know, we have a district-wide MOU that allows us to serve any students experiencing homelessness within the district. I'm proud to tell you, we now have full-time case managers at Newport Harbor High, Costa Mesa Middle and High, Ensign Intermediate, and Estancia High School, not to mention more to come, who are poison-ready to start serving elementary sites full-time. So here we are today. We all know the pandemic wreak havoc on our kids. From the get-go, we were on the ground, going to the kids living in motels, cars, and shelters. The one silver lining from this pandemic for our kids has been the visibility that has come from it in a way that very much, and quite frankly, felt invisible before. Pre-pandemic, we were serving just over 50 students. Due to the district's commendable focus on identifying and commitment to serve these students, we are acutely aware that there's an increase in that. And we have a list of over 230 more students who are verified as McKinney-Bento in recent months. So with the moratorium on evictions lifting soon, we know this may get worse before it gets better. And that's okay. I'm here tonight to tell you, we are here for it. We are here for all of it, and we are here for your students. So tonight is a huge deal, because up until this very moment, Project Hope has only ever utilized private funding. This is not because we don't enjoy money, I promise you that. But we don't go into partnerships frivolously. We don't chase money for the sake of funding. We are thoughtful and intentional about who we come alongside, and we ensure that decisions revolve around students. Students are always at the center of our circle. So the service agreement. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, your three minutes is up.
Okay, the agreement is the first time we're ever going to be taking public dollars. And I just want you guys to know the momentous occasion it is for us. Thank you all for your time and for seeing our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carmichael. That was very informative and probably could have been part of the report. Dr. Jocum.
Thank you, everything again. And yeah, Dr. Carmichael stole a little bit of my thunder, but it's it's great nonetheless to be able to share with you that one of the the uses that we're going to do out of the Expanded Learning Grant is to have an MOU with Project Hope Alliance for the next year for $150,000 to drastically increase the services that we're able to provide to students who are experiencing homelessness. And this is just one of the avenues that we are are exploring in terms of working experiencing homelessness. We also provide students with bus passes, and we do a lot of work out of the Welcome Center to support them. We are looking at adding a social worker who will be housed out of the Welcome Center to be able to deal with this large increase of homeless students that we've seen and be able to work with our school community facilitator, who are the kind of the boots on the ground, but really be able to help oversee and have a centralized vision for how we're working with those students. So as Dr. Carmichael said, in previous years, our our partnership with Project Hope Alliance has been at no cost to the district, and they have been a good community partner to us. And we are excited to be able to elevate the services. And and they're also kind of elevating them on their end. And then we're paying for more to kind of supplement that. So we are excited for the year ahead, and I encourage you to approve this this evening.
Thank you. Justy Anderson.
I would love to approve this one as well. But I also just wanted to thank Dr. Carmichael. I don't know if anyone has been able to go to their offices on Placentia, but I'm just so thankful for the work that they've done in the past and continue to do. Their director of education actually used to be a Puma Elementary teacher, and they just have a deep heart for our students in Newport Mesa. So I'm so excited that we're able to expand their capacity. And I'm, you know, I hope that the pandemic can does not impact any more families. I hope that, you know, the numbers can continue to go down. And I think with the support that organizations like Project Hope Alliance provide for us, it really is huge and essential. So I'm so excited that we're able to fund them this year.
So are you making a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Move by trustee Anderson, seconded by trustee Crane, roll call.
Student Board Member Luca Gukorishvili.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Item eighteen C, approve additions to the middle and high school course of study.
Thank you. Good evening. As part of your policies, rules, and regulations, any revisions or new courses of study need to come to you for approval. And this is the time of year that we do that. On this year's revisions and new courses, we have 10 courses. Seventy percent of them, so that would be seven of the courses are CTE courses. Some of those are revisions. But but exciting in adding some capstone classes and so forth for some of the pathways. We also have three other courses that are not CTE. We have the Lyceum Complet course. We have the Mesa course, which is math, engineering, science advancement for early college high school. And then another elective course at Newport Harbor High School, which is online photography. So it's exciting in working with the principals and talking with them about these courses. They're excited to move them forward. And then before you this evening for approval.
So moved. Second. But I had a question. Turf management just piqued my interest.
So turf management, I'm probably going to be turning to Lisa Snowden for this to help with that. It is a CTE course. It is coming to us from Corona del Mar. And it is pretty, the descriptor is pretty much what it is.
Oh.
It's managing turf. But Lisa Snowden, if you can fill in some of the details, that would be great.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Did you have like a specific question, or do you want me to just give you an overview of of the course?
It was unique.
It is. It is very unique. And, you know, I think although Mr. Hill could probably speak to this a little bit better than I could, you know, he always talks about pride, right? Pride, having pride in his students and his staff and the things that that happen in that and at that school. And so I think really the the idea here was, you know, they've got this beautiful, you know, new grass field, and, you know, they want to take some pride in maintaining that. And so having the students learn about, you know, turf management and the science that goes behind that, and then actually kind of get their hands dirty and do some of that work. So it is a very interesting class. But, you know, I think it's it's going to be a class well received, and we'll pilot it next year if you guys approve of the course, and we'll see where it goes.
It's kind of exciting for a hands on real, literally, like you said, get your hands dirty. But we, public education in general, as it has evolved, has been accused of forgetting all those things that people get jobs in and and or avocations or vocations. I mean, keeping grass growing is a really important thing for a lot of people. So I was intrigued and excited, and thank you for explaining it.
And when we do our next artificial turf field, we can have the students from this class do it.
Well, that might be, that might be turf management too, because this sounds like it's real grass. Maybe it's, we'll need one for the fake grass too.
An internship.
There you go.
Real world apprenticeship.
Okay, we have a motion approved, a motion made by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Crane.
I had just one more question before, but I could do it after.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering how the course of studies kind of get approved, where they're like, how did, you know, like, intro to turf manager? Were there like 40 students that said they wanted to do it? How how do these things come about? Like if, you know, if there are 25 parents at one school that asked for a program, like a team, like how does, how do these come to be?
Yeah, so they do come from the sites and oftentimes from teacher interest. And they'll submit a petition for a course. And we'll look at credentials and all of those pieces before it's approved, and then it goes back to them to write the course. Oftentimes, their courses are written not necessarily 100% committing to that it's going to be offered next year. If they don't have the student interest that maybe they originally thought, they may put it off until they can draw up some more interest.
So it's teacher led?
Teacher and site for the most part, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. A roll call though.
Student Board Member Luca Gukorishvili.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
And Mr. Drake, you are not done. Eighteen D, approve elementary textbook for public display.
Wait, there's more.
Thank you. Yes, there is one more here. And I have Laura Dale Pash to help me with this. As you know, Whittier Elementary School is a dual immersion Spanish program. And Laura has gone through a process with the upper grade teachers this year to identify some history, social studies materials for adoption. And I'd like Laura to go ahead and share that information and then ask, you know, for your approval.
Good evening. Good evening, President Yelsey, trustees, Superintendent Lee Sung, Cabinet and Staff. It's my pleasure to share with you a brief update regarding our dual immersion Spanish program. Our program, as you know, is currently in grades Kinder through fifth grade, and next year we'll be adding sixth grade. It's very exciting. It's really an exciting time as we develop the upper grade program to ensure rigor in both English and Spanish content and academic language. Just to make sure we're all on the same page, our current instructional model for our Spanish dual program is the following. In grades Kinder through three, we deliver Spanish through language arts and math. And in our upper grades, four and five, and next year, sixth grade, we'll include in that Spanish is delivered through history, social science, and science. So the this model really strives to deepen the level of academic Spanish through content learning as our students move to the upper grades. So for the past two years, actually, we have been piloting at Whittier with our Spanish upper grade classes, the McGraw-Hill History Social Science Curriculum. This program is state adopted. It aligns with wonders and through an evaluation process and practice, it has been deemed the best fit for our students and the dual instructional program. I do really, really want to acknowledge our upper grade Spanish dual teachers in grades four and five that have been instrumental and very involved in this process. They actually are the process. And so tonight, we bring forward a request to approve these textbooks for public display. And then at our June 22 board meeting, we'll be coming back to you to request the approval of the materials. So I'm really excited to bring this to you. It's a step in the right direction for the trajectory of our program. It's an exciting time to really be developing the curriculum for our upper grade dual program. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Do I have a motion?
Do you want us to move and second and then ask questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I will move adoption of the elementary textbooks for public display.
Second, please.
Okay, and questions?
Where will these be on public display? And are they digital or are they hard copy or both?
So for display due to COVID, we will have links that will be available on the website. Was your question about hardback for the display or the actual materials for student? So for review, it will all be digital on the website because we can't have anybody coming in and out of the building.
Where? Where on the website? It's not that I'm trying to complain about our website, but certain times, it's very difficult to find things. So if you can walk me through where it will be that at least when someone asks me, I can tell them.
Mr. Drake, are you familiar with the specifics of where we'll put those?
Not yet, but I will by the morning.
So the email, when I get it in the email.
Can we put something on the front of the website just to direct somebody saying that?
I'll work with Ms. Franco to make sure that's publicized and that we get those out.
Could we also please make sure that it's on the Whittier School front of their website? And then also maybe a link in their like PTA Facebook group, just so everyone that can click the link really quickly. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by trustee Barto, a second by trustee Anderson. Roll call.
Student Board Member Luca Gukorishvili.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
This is actually really exciting to get the program all the way through. It's kindergarten through sixth grade next year. It's pretty, pretty exciting.
Okay, item eighteen E, first reading and adoption of modifications to board policy. And we do have two comments on this. So I will take those first. Mrs. Fish, could you call up Martha Mira and then Wendy Lee's?
Thank you, President Yelsey. Marty, please, you have three minutes to speak. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record and begin speaking. Let me try that again.
Can you hear me yet?
Yes, please go ahead.
This is new for me. Good evening, Superintendent Lee Sung and trustees. Thank you for scheduling on the agenda, the placement of agenda and non agenda items at the beginning of your meetings. I think during Zoom meetings, people should be allowed to write comments for trustees to read. The reasoning is that some people are very shy and are better off writing something, and second language learners could have their comments translated and written out rather than them being at home and having a translator at their home so you could, they could translate at the same time. I think it's great that the high school representatives have a question to answer. In addition to the PTA president, I think there should also be a PFO representative, the union president, and CSEA representative. All these speakers would include, including all of them, would be less than 30 minutes time, which does not take much time out of your program. Thank you very much for seriously considering these suggestions.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Lee's. Wendy, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record and begin speaking.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Wendy Lee's, and I'm speaking in support of your changing this board policy. As a longtime community activist, going back to the 80s, I, it really would be very beneficial to the community to move the public comments on agenda and non agenda items to the beginning of the meeting. People are busy, and I think you'll find that making it easier for the community, the taxpayers to give their comments and then go on and help their kids with homework and do family things. Maybe they'll stay and listen. That's fine. But I think it's very, it would be much more hospitable for the board to allow us to at the beginning of the meeting. And I think somehow I appreciate President Yelsey, or maybe it was Matoye, talking about, you know, it was sharing about making it easier on the website to know where parents can go to look at these textbooks online. In that same token, I think an overall attitude of welcoming the community to give their input. We've all survived COVID, and I'm impressed by the the learning plan that you just presented. I especially like the the scope of it to for all kids and especially for those who are struggling. But making your meetings available for comment on many items would, I think, bring the district into a better state of transparency. And I think it make a lot of people happy. So I I hope you would vote yes on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. President Yelsey, there are no more speakers on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Lee Sung.
Okay, I wanted to just highlight the work that has been done since the last board meeting. If you recall, the last board meeting, the board did direct me to work on some revisions to the bylaws to be able to bring public comments on non agendized items earlier into the agenda. So we did put together some draft language. We had a very detailed meeting with the Policy Edit Committee. So I want to thank trustees Matoye, trustee Anderson, and trustee Ursoilu, who really delved in deeply, I want to say every word, and really got it to a great place. And so you know how it's, you know, more than one pair of eyes, you know, when you have a whole bunch of people looking at it and back and forth, created some really great language. So what you see here is the product of that work. And we also found a clause that was included in the sample CSBA policy that we put in here, thinking that we were going to take a close look at this policy, which is something that we had always felt we should do. But to see it in actual sample policy through CSBA, we thought this would be the great opportunity to add that. And that is the clause about if we have a public speaker who is non English speaking and translation needs to be provided, that it just makes sense that we would double the time for that individual so that they wouldn't have to cut their comments short or cut into the overall time. So we did add that clause in there. Wasn't something the board directed last time, but we felt since we're looking at this policy, we might as well put that in there for your consideration.
Thank you, Susan Fish, for finding it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And Rosie and Susan Fish also did great work behind this, put this together for us.
Would any of the committee members like to make a comment on this or make a motion, since you all think probably that it's delightful?
Would you know, I will, I'm not afraid to talk. So I'm going to defer to trustee Ursoilu or trustee Anderson, who is also not afraid to talk. So trustee Ursoilu, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
May I say something before before trustee Dr. Ursoilu says something? From, I was not a native English language speaker. And from that perspective, it's just really resonates with me because English is my third language. And if I wasn't given the chance when I first came to the United States to be given the chance to speak and learn the language, without that opportunity, I would not have been able to succeed as much. So thank you for doing that.
Do I have a motion then?
So, President Yelsey, I have a logistic question. Do I need to abstain from the vote because I publicly wrote an op ed suggesting this very policy in 2019? So do I have to abstain or can I vote?
I don't know.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that. Actually, trustee Anderson and I will tie the second. Did any of our colleagues have any questions on any of the little parts that we?
I just, I thought it was really well done and great job. And I like that we kind of hit all of our points of, you know, respecting everyone who's here, their time and as well as giving the opportunity for the public to know at what time they're going to be speaking.
One of the things that we took into consideration when we did this as a board was the fact that as a president, you tend to, you get to set up the agenda, and it moves. And the public, depending on who the president is, doesn't know when it is. And this at least takes one burden off the president. You don't have to decide this. This document lets whoever becomes president know, here's the order that things are going to go in. And the one piece that the public may not have realized, because they commented on going first, was if for some reason we have one of those delightful topics that's just so dear to to way a lot of people. We can, we'll have our 20 minutes at the at the regular time. And if we still have 57,000 people, we can add. we can add more time at the end of the meeting, so it doesn't mean it's going to be chopped off. So that was a little thing that I thought was really nice to add in.
Agree. And very nice job, all of you. Thank you so much for getting into the nitty-gritty details.
It was a good group.
And we basically, I mean, we only really reviewed Section 5. And one of the things that came up too, as I was rereading it as the whole thing got submitted, is the part before that, that's actually the, you know, under number one for public participation. And this was something that I know, we've had a question about it particularly during COVID. And I'm just wondering too, because it's different a little bit than what we have on our agenda, where it says, "So as to not inhibit public participation, persons attending the board meeting shall not be requested to sign in, complete a questionnaire, or otherwise provide their name or other information as a condition of attending the meeting," which is very tricky with our current having to use Zoom, right? So I just didn't know how, as we're planning for the next meetings and then also bringing people back. I think it's easier, right? If someone's filling out a comment card, they wouldn't have to put their name or they would, you know, but over Zoom, I'm not sure how we're able to do that. So it's just something to consider because it is in there. Well, I didn't realize it was in there.
This, go ahead.
I think the distinction is that as a condition of attending the meeting is different than as a condition of submitting a comment.
Yes.
So you can attend without submitting your name, and that is tricky on Zoom. But we do have a lot of people who put a concerned parent to sign in. And then for the comment, I think that is required. That's a state statute, I believe.
Exactly. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion made by Trustee Ursoilu and seconded by Trustee Matoye. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Luca Gukorishvili?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now move to the resolution calendar and we have three items. And Superintendent Lee Sung would like to address this first.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I made my comments earlier about these two resolutions, but I I know that our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Leon, also would also like to talk about these two resolutions.
Good evening. Yes, I absolutely would. May such a wonderful month of appreciation and recognition, and tonight, I think, really symbolizes that. We start with our students and then all of the wonderful lovely comments that have been made about our staff. And like everybody has said, this year, more than ever, we want to recognize. So I did want to take just a moment just to say a couple of things. Because there are, schools are such complex organizations and there are a few things that we have learned over time. We know that it only takes one significant adult to make a difference in a child's life. We know that saying hello to a child, calling them by name, makes all the difference in the world, not just that day, but for an extended amount of time. We know that our schools provide the stability for students, something that they can count on each and every day, even when the rest of the world is chaotic. We know that our schools and our programs have the power to create the resiliency in our children. So these things can only be possible with the efforts and dedication of our staff. And this year, what is especially heartwarming is that our staffs had their own families to deal with during COVID and to assist. But they still stepped up and continued to provide for our students. So we want to recognize our teachers who go the extra mile. They make students feel valued. They find out what motivates them. They offer them that extra help and inspire them to reach their potential and obtain their goals. And equally as important is our classified staff who play crucial role in the educational program. From the bus drivers who start the day with a hello and say good night or good afternoon. We have our custodians who keep our students safe on clean campuses. We have our campus safety facilitators and student supervision assistants who keep a watchful eye on them. Our instructional aides who lend that helping hand and nutrition services who feed them. And the other groups that we don't see all the time, the people who come and go from our sites to keep them operating and those at the district office to ensure that we have staff, that staff is taken care of. All of that goes into the operations of our schools. And so collectively, all of these employees service our students every day. And while we can never thank them enough, we can recognize and express our deepest appreciation for the work that they do. So tonight before you, I asked you to consider the two resolutions, one for our teacher appreciation as well as for the Classified Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And both are equally important, so we're going to take them separately. The first one is 19A Adopt Resolution 250521, Recognizing California Day of the Teacher, May 12, 2021, and National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 3 through 7, 2021. And I know Mrs. Olson wanted to get this on at our last meeting and because HR is so busy doing everything they're doing, they did not get it on our calendar time, but that doesn't make it any less important or significant. Do I have a motion?
So? So moved?
The hand, the hand? Who was that?
Carol.
Carol.
Trustee Crane.
Trustee Crane.
We're raising hands with our masks. Okay. Second?
Second.
Move by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
And then 19B Adopt Resolution 240521, Recognizing May 16 through the 22, 2021, as Classified School Employee Week.
I move to adopt the resolution recognizing May 16 through the 22, 2021, as Classified School Employee Week.
Second.
Move by Trustee Wigan, seconded by Trustee Matoye. Roll call vote?
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
And then we have one more resolution, Adopt Resolution Number 260521, Designating the Observance of Washington Day on February 21, 2022, and Lincoln Day on February 22, 2022.
I just wanted you to know before we do that, come on up. Come, come, I'll talk while you walk. It's a meaningless thing. We're going to do this and I'm fine, but February 22 is Washington's birthday. From someone who came from Illinois who knew what President Lincoln's birthday was, I just want you to know, I'm making a big sacrifice, accepting it the way it's written.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. So this is an annual resolution that comes forward to the board to designate when those two days are. And that allows us, it is required by the ed code. And we place them in that particular spot, in those spots, so that we are able to have our president's recess break. So that gives us the entire week in February. So we ask that the board approve the resolution.
I will move to approve the resolution. I just wanted to
I'll second.
Hit that in.
Move by Trustee Matoye, seconded by Trustee Barto. Roll call vote?
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Okay, item 20, Community Input on Non-Agendized Items, and we do have some comments. So, Trustee Matoye, would you please read?
Yes. Speakers wishing to address the board on non-agendized topics have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by no later than 11:00 AM today, May 18, 2021. Comments on non-agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
We have two comment cards. Mrs. Fish, would you call up Lanai Smith and then Gloria Kelly?
Yes, thank you, President Yelsey. Lanai Smith spoke earlier, I know, and she is not on the list at the moment, attending the meeting. So we will go to Gloria Kelly. Gloria, please, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Gloria Kelly. I am a substitute teacher in the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Garden Grove Unified School District. And my comment is, my son, who graduated from Costa Mesa High School in 2019, wanted to get access to his Google, his student Google account to get some of the things that he had done during his senior year. Mainly his resume and some of the letters of recommendation that he had for his senior project. I spoke with one of the people, and I spoke with the tennis lady at Newport Mesa, Ruth Fillmore, and she told me that I should contact IT. So I called IT and they told me that I needed to get approval from the, from the principal of the school. So I contacted Mr. Haley and Mr. Haley proceeded to ask Ms. Doozy, who is his counselor, whether or not that that could happen. So then they proceeded to ask his English teacher if he could have access to his email. So I'm not sure where the breakdown happens, but he, it went back. Mr., his English teacher told him that IT, that Mr. Haley needed to release his email account to him so that he could have access. And then I went back to Mr. Haley and asked him again, and then Mr. Haley told me that he doesn't have jurisdiction to release his email. So I'm not quite sure how, why, or what reason, how he can get access to his documents that he did when he was in high school. Because I never got any answers from that for now. Thank you.
President Yelsey, that's the last.
I acknowledge Gloria Kelly's comments and I hope she's still listening in, but I would welcome her to contact me in the superintendent's office and we'll make sure that we understand fully what the issue and challenge is and we'll provide assistance to her. So.
Thank you.
If I, that's actually, I've actually been asked that a few times in the past. Is there a way that we could possibly, before this class graduates, that either they forward all of their information to a personal email account? Or something, there's, because it's been an ongoing thing for several years that students can't get there. They can't access there. So if we could work on that.
We can, we can work on that, since we're not, it's not a discussion for tonight, but we can talk about it.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the informal reports and Superintendent Lee Sung?
No, gave my report earlier this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Jacom?
Thank you again. Third time is the charm up here. I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the community for the support of our Mental Health Matters kickoff event. A couple Saturdays ago, I saw pictures and video of several of you participating in our 5K and all of that. Trustee Matoye is wearing our Mental Health Matters shirt tonight. So and again, May is Mental Health Matters Month and it was a really lovely event. They did a lot of different activities throughout the day and we're we're really looking forward to kind of growing this type of positive focus on mental health moving into the future. So thank you for that. And then I wanted to let you all know that the Orange County School Nurses Association announced their awards and Newport Mesa had a clean sweep of those awards this year. So we have Susan Curtin, who is, she supports preschool and she also does CPR training for the district. And she was awarded the School Readiness Nurse of the Year. Kristy Craig, who is the nurse over at Costa Mesa High School, was awarded the School Nurse of the Year Award. And my very own Mary Grasca was awarded the School Nurse Administrator of the Year. So we're really proud of, you know, we talked about acknowledging all the hard work that people have done during COVID and we know that the health services staff has been especially busy, both the nurses and the health assistants, and it's wonderful that they got this recognition from the county.
Wow.
Thank you.
That's exciting. Congratulations. Mrs. Olson?
Apparently, third time's the charm, I'm told. Yeah, just very, very quickly, President Yelsey, thank you for acknowledging our HR staff who has been working just tremendous hours and with such diligence to ensure that we are staffed. To give you an example, for the robust summer program that you saw or you heard about tonight, in the classified realm, we are processing approximately 350 of our employees to continue to work during the summer, which is more, many more than what we process in a full year. And with our, and that's under the direction of our administrative director, Kristen Clark, and her team, who just is just on fire and now they're turning around for next year. And then also, we have on the certificated side, to give you an example, they have been working diligently throughout the year. But when we chose to go to full day, on a dime, they turned and processed 22 full-time elementary teachers to assist at the school sites in addition to some hourlies and other positions. So Megan Brown, our administrative director of certificated staff, and her team have just been working tremendously hard as well. And I'm sure our employees are seeing now our summer programs, as well as we're starting to recruit for next year and have been for the last few weeks as well. So it's all, it just is all kind of coming together, crossing over, but they're working really, really hard. So thank you for acknowledging it and I think they're a great team.
Thank you. And it's nice to see all those job postings come by every day. I mean, really, it's five times a day they pop up. Great work. Mr. Drake? Right.
I have taken my three turns this evening. No report other than those that I've already provided.
Thank you so much. Dr. Bammeister?
So I'll seed some of Mr. Break's time. Wanted to give you an update on Human Relations Task Force, and I actually wanted to open the same way we open all of our meetings, which is with our purpose statement, which really I think helps center our work. The purpose statement is, "The Human Relations Task Force will be charged with making recommendations to the Cabinet and Board of Education regarding issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion to further the district's ongoing commitment to create safe, respectful, and inclusive schools for all students, families, and community members. These issues can include addressing bias-related incidents, anti-bias education, recommendations for staff professional development, parent and student human relations education, as well as other diversity-related issues." At our last meeting, we updated the Human Relations Task Force Implementation Plan for 2122, which, thanks to Annette Franco, is on our district website. Hopefully you've seen it. "The work of the committee is now to develop pre and post rubrics for our stakeholders to evaluate the merit of each program, to give the committee information about the programs in place. The ongoing work of the committee then will be to evaluate these programs and see if each program is meeting the goal of furthering our district goals. If they are, then we'll continue with the program, and if they're not, the committee will then look at other programs that may better meet the goals of creating safe, respectful, and inclusive schools." So I just wanted to cover a couple of the key programs in the implementation plan that's on the website. Again, hopefully you've seen it. For the students, as you know, kind of the key piece is that visit to the Museum of Tolerance for all of our 10th graders. And this year, we obviously had to do it virtually, but Dr. Bolton and I talked to the the folks at the Museum of Tolerance last week, and it looks like we'll be able to send students there next week. I mean, next year. So we're going to be meeting with them in September, because we've heard that actually some of the schools really liked the virtual one. So we will give our schools the option to either go in person or virtually. So we'll sit down with them in September and make out that plan. We'll be going back to Chapman University's Annual Holocaust Art and Writing Contest for our middle schools and high schools, and really our art departments really kind of jumped on that last year. We're really hoping that they will again for next year. Another program that we're really interested in, we just Another program that we're really interested in, we just about had it going last August, or last April, and then COVID hit, was the Courage to Remember Holocaust Art Exhibit. And if you remember, that's a traveling art exhibit that is set up at all four of our comprehensive schools for a week at a time. And during that week, we bring in our elementary schools, our middle school feeder schools, to go through the program, as well as our juniors. And we'll also have a night at each one of those four comprehences for the community. We'll invite the D-LAC, the PTA, our community leaders, to come and see that as well. So that's another one that we're really looking forward to. If you remember, the Read to Me Project was a project for elementary school. Killy Brook piloted that program in nineteen. We couldn't have visitors to come in and read this year, so we're hoping that Killy Brook and maybe one or two more schools will take that on for next year. Another really kind of important, or two important pieces, is the ADL Student Leadership Training at Corona del Mar and Newport Harbor that they've done the last two years, and that they'll continue this year. And they're actually adding team captains from sports this year and presidents of clubs. So they're kind of expanding that training on their campuses. The Dear Program for Costa Mesa and Estancia will be fall, will be in place for next year as well. And then for our staff, the big, the key piece for our staff training is the Anti-Defamation League's implicit bias and becoming an ally training, as you guys all went through in two thousand and nineteen. For next year, we're going to have two levels, for Back Bay, Cloud, Early College, Enson, and Timical Middle Schools, we haven't gone through it. We're calling it the implicit bias one oh one training. And then for the four schools that have already been through it, Corona del Mar, Costa Mesa, Estancia, Newport Harbor, they're going to have what we call a two oh one. So they'll actually be going deeper into that material. They already know some of the terms and things. So again, we don't want this to be a one-off. We want this to be ongoing continual training for our staff and for our kids. We're also hoping to have some type of human relations class on the November first Staff Development Day. Again, we're hoping that that will happen. And instead of community workshops, if you remember, those kind of, kind of fell by the wayside at the end last year. We've kind of looped that in and combined them with the Parent Education Series Workshop. And so a few of those will have human relations topics for that workshop. So that is the work of the Human Relations Task Force. That's the work that they were doing this year. Again, to further the district's commitment to create safe and respectful, inclusive schools where all students can thrive. With the support of the board and the cabinet, our principals and staff, we really feel that we're making progress towards those ends as well. So that's our, our update for the Human Relations Task Force.
Thank you, Dr. Baumeister, for, for sharing that with everyone. Some of us are on the committee and hear about what's going on, but if you go to the website, there's a whole host in addition to the things you've talked about tonight, and some dedicated people who have been working on that. So it will be great to get back in person to some of these things. But even online, they've been pretty impactful, if anybody's tuned in at any of the schools.
Well, and I wanted everybody to know that our kids, even though they weren't able to go out to these places, they really still got some good training, and the Museum of Tolerance was still a very powerful experience for our kids. And I didn't mention, too, we do have Newport Harbor, Corona del Mar, and Enson that are going out, their staff after school's over, to get training at the Museum of Tolerance, as they did two years ago. We just set that up with them as well. So they'll be going the week after school's out.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Holcomb.
I will just be the setup man for Mr. Trader, because over the next month, he and I will be participating in a lot of workshops, going through what's been a very, very interesting year. We all know that typically, we get a view of things in January. We start the budget season shortly thereafter, with the expectation that it's pretty common from year to year, we know what we're doing. And of course, this has not only been the COVID year, but the year where the state's revenues are very robust. And so with the governor making his announcements, there's a lot of folks who are figuring that out, and we will be participating and bringing that all to you for your June meetings. So with that introduction, Mr. Trader will give you a bit more about the day.
This is another really busy man right now, with all his various funds that he's got to keep track of.
Yes. You know, have you ever felt like a hamburger at a hot dog party? I'm here to tell you, this budget is a hot dog at a hamburger. It is unbelievable. There are four hundred new programs in this budget. And, you know, talk about, you know, superintendent Li Sung emphasizes to us, we need to keep the main thing, the main thing. And this is going to be hard, dealing with this budget in that regard. There's, it has three colas to it. It, they're adding substantial money to the LCFF, which, the formula itself. So we, we won't necessarily get to participate in that. But there is some targeted intervention that they're looking at that we could participate in. But again, keeping the main thing, the main thing, and accomplishing your vision, that's going to be the key. The, the words used by the LAO was scattershot regarding what was in there. And, and I think the one thing that's really important for you to know right now is what's not in there. And that is, there's no pension relief. And the governor did not, although he bought down some of the money he's, he's borrowed from us, he still owes schools over two point six billion dollars. So, so as you use your influence, those are two things that we would find very helpful, and we look forward to bringing greater detail to you in June.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to it.
To a long meeting.
Thank you. No, he does a great job. Concise.
Yes, he and Mrs. Bailey.
Okay, board member reports. Does anyone have anything they would like to share?
I have a couple little things. I'll be short. I attended the Arias dance performance at Newport Harbor High School. And it was, it was really exciting to see how excited everyone was to be back performing. It was really well done as well. But it just, the, the tears and the joy of every single person participating was, I mean, my daughter wanted to sit up in the high top of the stands, because she'd never sat there before, but even from way up there in the nosebleeds, you could just see the emotion that all of these students had, being back and performing, and it was really amazing and beautiful. And I just wanted to thank the board for approving the, it was on the consent calendar, the matching funds for the C-TIG grant. That's the Career and Technical Education Incentive Grant, and that is a huge source for coastline ROP for their funds. We offer matching funds for what they get for their grant. So thank you. That, that directly impacts some of the programs that we approved tonight for the additional course of study, and just makes possible the wonderful things that they already do.
I'll go last.
Does anybody else have, trustee Wigan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we had gone last week with, for the, with the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation to deliver grants to the teachers for, you know, a thousand dollars, or a group grant for three thousand dollars. And getting to talk to these teachers about how the year has gone, and about their grant and what they've won. They're so proud of winning the grant, but they're so happy to provide their students with something super creative, whether it be a new program or a new way to do art with a civilization, say, project in sixth grade. Very creative teachers we have at Newport Mesa, and I'm just thoroughly impressed with their dedication to the students, especially this year. That has been so difficult for everyone. So it's, it's been an honor to be able to be there and give them money that they, that they definitely need.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I get to do race tomorrow, so I'm very excited to participate in that. And I was able to participate too this last Saturday, was Love Costa Mesa Day. And it was just an amazing event for our city, and I was able to help at the Wilson Street Learning Center. They have over a hundred kids that they serve year-round and have been doing through most of COVID. So that was a wonderful experience, and I'm hoping we can participate more next year. Thank.
Thank you.
Okay, then I will. Do you have something? Okay. Trustee Crane and I were able to attend the Orange County Music Awards presentation, of which we had three of our music, our arts instructors. Sarah Anderson from, did drama from Costa Mesa High School. Jamie Tanzer did dance at Newport Harbor High School, and Bridget Deffin, our TOSA slash music teacher, did, got an award for elementary music teacher, and we had several nominees that were also acknowledged. And it's just nice to see our former music TOSA, Scott Fitzpatrick, in the position where he can now honor some of our teachers in a wonderful way for music and arts and visual arts. It's, it's a very rewarding experience. Mrs. Crane, trustee Crane, and President Yelsey and I were able to attend Shakespeare in the Spring, which was an outside Shakespeare performance at Costa Mesa High School. And the kids were in full Romeo and Juliet garb and did snippets, little soliloquies from each, for many different Shakespeare things. And again, so fun to see kids and be able to clap and have them see you clapping. And even if it's just your eyes, it was really, really wonderful. It was, I was quite happy to go to the Costa Mesa Swim Meet at Costa Mesa High School in their pool that was clear, beautiful, and well full of water. So now in Costa Mesa, we have two functioning high school swimming pools. Go, Mr. Bidnick. And last but not least, for the last weekend, I was able to attend a three-day workshop, our delegate assembly. And I wanted to let the board know, I'm putting together a short summary of what we did, but I'm going to be sending you lots of links, because there was lots of information that was given at that delegate summary. And I just have to, again, reiterate, we hear what's going on in the state. Our state is amazingly diverse. We have school districts where they have ninety-seven, the district has ninety-seven students. The superintendent is also the principal of this high school. Their busing is critical, because if they don't, kids don't get bused, they don't get to go to school. And then there's LA Unified. So the fact that every single school district is getting kids to school somehow and still teaching. And I sit back and just grin from ear to ear, because ninety percent of when they, someone's bragging, I'm going, we either have done that, doing that, or have been doing that for years. And it's, we are so fortunate to live where we live and to have the people in leadership that we have that haven't forgotten where they came from and know that our kids and our teachers and our employees are just wonderful. And I brag about us all the time. So you'll look, look for your mailbox for more reading than you'd ever want. Thank you.
And since everybody is mentioning the arts, I think we need to acknowledge that the arts are alive and well throughout our district now.
Oh, yeah.
And I think trustee Crane and I also have to add, we've been to several performances at CDM, whether it's music with the, with Mr. Ball and the choir, various choirs. They did one play, Theory of Relativity, which was pretty amazing. And then we went to a year in remembrance, which is very similar to every year, the PAMA program puts on, highlights what they've done over the year, and this was more an impromptu. And it was fabulous. It really was. The talent at all of our schools is amazing. And as you said, trustee Barto, it's so nice to see the kids so excited and enjoying what they love doing so much. That and the sports have just made the last month and a half of school really pretty amazing.
Well, and in elementary school, arts are in our core. Every student gets music. Every student gets art of some sort.
And they're just starting that back up again.
But they had it, they had it during COVID, because they.
But they did it, I mean, in person.
Oh, and, and now the teachers are back on the sites and getting it live and in person. But we never let it go, just because we had to do it in a little square that was this big.
Okay, do we have any committee reports?
I committed my.
I don't think there was any. We had, we had a meeting recently. Okay, before we adjourn, we were in closed session earlier before our meeting, and we have adjourned our closed session to tomorrow, Wednesday, May eighteenth, at four PM. And the closed session meeting will be held in the boardroom. So the vote to do, we had to take a vote to extend that, and the vote was seven zero. So we will be meeting again tomorrow, and I want to thank everybody. So can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting here tonight?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Moved by trustee Wigan, seconded by trustee Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.